Well, you know, they should let Greg and I run the city, but I don't think they're going to.
I came, I came to a trick, trunk or treat and froze my rear end.
I went to that.
Traffic. Yeah, that's what the mayor, mayor said that's where he was at too. So, so that's why I was late.
He left early from the meeting.
Yeah.
I thought he and Katie Williams both, I thought.
Just make it parks.
You, we probably should. Well, there's no meeting. You don't have to record. We don't have a call. So. If we can get open space, why not?
That's the goal.
Well, it's, it's either that or apartments.
Excuse me.
Or houses.
What do, what does that do for these property owners though?
That's what increases their property value next to a park.
No, I'm talking to these property.
Oh, that'll be the developers. They have to come in and they'll have to develop it to developers law as part of their, part of the plan.
They won't be able to get anything out of other parks.
No, they can get, there's houses. Cause if you look at it.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
If you look at this, there's 20 acre, so there's two parks, two 10 acre parks. And this is, this property here is, I think, how big's the chug property? Couple hundred acres.
I see. That's just saying where you're going to designate parks inside of.
Right, right. I got you. So, this is actually, is that the chug property? No, that's not the chug.
Peterson, isn't it?
Yeah, that's Peterson. That's not good.
Well.
Here's the chug property here.
So Peterson owns. About that much of that.
Right.
The rest of this is still, most of them I think is still owned by the church.
Yeah.
That's the old church farm.
Oh.
So.
So yeah, here's the chug property here.
Got you.
And as long as Dell's alive, that will never change, which is fine. It's his property. He can do what he wants. Uh, I don't know what will happen. When it moves to the family. And this has been, this was actually master planned once. 15 years ago, huge development and it fell apart.
Yeah. Does Nielsen Homes stop right here? Is that where their line is?
Yeah.
Pretty much somewhere in here. They might be.
They're right up to the line.
Are they right to the line?
They're right to the line because it was, we talked about that. We also have that bridge coming in and then, and then whatever's next phase comes in. We have the bridge abutment come that needs to be put in.
So, and there's people along here that still do not want to settle that. That was part of the problem. Uh, they based their development on property they didn't own.
Oh, Nielsen Homes did?
No, the.
Oh, that bigger development you're talking about.
So, this, uh, actually at, if all this were developed, we would have about the right number of parks. It looks like a lot of parks right now.
So do they get, so these people, they just have to put the park in?
Well, they'll negotiate.
Uh, we have a park impact fee, but it's nowhere near enough. So the city could, uh, once this is passed, the city could, uh, redo the park impact fee, which I can almost guarantee is going to make that fee go up significantly. Uh, impact fees are very unpopular in state legislature. Uh, but it is legal to impose them. Um, it's, uh.
I know Slater Hills Park fee is expensive.
Well, I bet ours would be $4,500, maybe $5,000. If, if all this, because all of this really is. Primarily this impacts, oh, the impact is from new construction.
Sure.
So you then, uh, calculate. How much each one of these is going to cost and how many homes and, and then they actually factor in. So let's say for instance, they decided these folks would benefit from these parks, then that would be actually taken out of the impact fee.
Oh, okay.
So you can't charge impact fees for anything that, that benefits. So we'd have to pay. I'll bet a new impact fee study would be $25,000.
Is that right?
The last one I did when I was with Reber was, I want to say 16,000. And that's been. 12 years ago.
You know, what 85 million for that one in Salt Lake?
Park.
Yeah. On the west side there at the old.
Yeah.
Splish and splash, whatever it was.
I mean, depending on what you do.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and then you've got to make the decision. Do you want? Do you want to dedicate it, you know, the old fashioned trees and glomp park? Or do you want soccer fields and baseball diamonds and?
Something more usable for population or?
And, and so depending on, on your stage in life. You may want this.
Yeah.
Or you may want the, you know, what, what a park was when I was a boy, a park was different than the baseball diamond. They were not considered the same thing. So, uh.
The city collects fees or rent from like a soccer field?
Yeah, and they do. The, so the, I can't remember, remember the name of the company that, that runs their soccer program, but they actually pay the city to use.
A W S O.
I think it is.
And SWAT.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I put in both those.
I just know, I know a soccer club that is trying to get three fields and they'll pay $18,000 a month for it. Just so they can have a home place. That's where the city couldn't like say it's yours.
Well, they, they actually could, uh, but then they have to deal with angry parents.
The city does?
Well, so if you want a place for little Johnny to play soccer or little Sally, whoever it might be, and the city has, uh, leased it out to a, a club. Uh, they're probably going to make more money, but, uh.
You're going to have a lot of angry.
You're going to have a lot of angry families. So it, it becomes a, you know, what, what are we going to do here? So, uh, these are, I, I, I think these are well laid out. I think Steve did, uh, Steve Hurd did most of the work on the parks for us. Steve did a really, really good job. I think our zoning is right where we want it to be.
Thanks to you for the bar.
Uh, so.
Is this one of your future land use?
Actually, this, this is the one you want to look at. So that would be the future land use. This is your, uh, legend. It'll tell you what the various things are, but, uh, and we ought to mix that. The engineer asked if we want to make the parks green instead of the, uh,
you know.
The, yeah, and then we change the colors up a little bit, but, uh.
So commercial and residential, is that like?
Well, what it would do is it would allow, uh, long-term, I think it would probably allow some higher density housing.
Yeah.
I don't know when that's going to happen to us. We've actually had pretty good luck in keeping that at bay. Uh, I think at some point we're gonna. That's going to be more challenging. Is, it's, so the, the legislature looks at modern income housing. Every session have done for the last several years and, uh, the, uh, you look around at the amount of housing that's been built in Salt Lake Valley in the last 10 years. It's unreal.
Sure.
And they can't keep up.
Yeah.
And so one of the biggest issues with that fire that happened in Salt Lake is there are people waiting for those apartments.
Yeah.
That now aren't going to be available.
Yeah.
And so.
How many units was that?
I never got a unit count. Uh.
It's a big building.
Yeah, it was.
It's still burning. Yeah.
It'll, it'll likely burn. When wood, it's like the, your, your fire campfire caves in on itself.
Yeah.
But the coals at the bottom stay hot till the next morning.
Yeah.
Same principle.
Yeah.
So, uh, they'll be dealing with that. And then they had the, cause it had scaffolding all around it to do the exterior work.
Yeah.
The scaffolding then became a pretty significant safety hazard because of the heat. It was all deformed and.
Sure.
And scaffolding is not.
Structural?
No, it just sits on top. I, I mean, it should be pinned, but oftentimes it's not. And, uh, so their first order of business was to get that scaffolding all down.
Yeah.
And then they have to ensure scene safety.
I know they're starting demo, they were starting demo today and they're, they got the fire stream, you know, they're demoing back to the sections. I don't know how much they got done today.
I, I actually did not get a report today.
I saw, well, I was watching the news just before I came. They were talking about it on the news. So they may not have done any demo today. They may just put the plan together of how they're going to do it.
And I, I know when I talked to Tony Allred's, the fire marshal in Salt Lake, and when I talked to him yesterday, they were going to try and start that today. Uh, but they have to. They also want to investigate the fire and all of the private. So everybody that's on that, working on that job. Is going to want a piece of that investigation because in, from the private side, they're looking for subrogation, looking for somebody to blame.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so you'll have, I'll bet there's a dozen private investigators that want to come in. And do that. And then Salt Lake City has an excellent investigation team themselves. Uh, because of the size of the fire, they may involve ATF.
So they were going to be involved, at least on the news.
And so, uh, our office has offered help. But you know, you don't, you reach a point where there's too many cooks in the kitchen. And so we have not pushed that at all. I just told Salt Lake City, if you need anything, let us know. And so, uh, but the point here is a spoliation of evidence then becomes huge. And so. You have to do a certain amount of demolition. You still want to get that fire extinguished because you know, you, there's, there's continuing hazards there. But you've also got to do a proper investigation. Uh, if, if you spoil evidence that reasonably could have been collected. Then you can be held liable.
Yeah.
And so it, it becomes, at, at this point, it, it becomes a fairly serious dance. And, uh, it's. So that was tarp'd. Like I said, they were, they were working on the inside. They were getting ready to do the outside. So that, that very possibly could have burned for hours. Before anybody saw it.
And they were talking today about the membrane. That's the biggest thing they're having trouble with right now today. Is that rubber roof membrane? Cause it's still smoldering and spreading as it gets soft and liquid.
That's crazy.
So. So there's, there's lots of issues and, uh, we'll see where it all happens.
Yeah.
We have one chair. One more person shows up, we can go to work.
Right. I had a concert over at a junior high I had to go to for a bit, so.
Well, you know, those are important.
Yep. Nice news story last night. Saw you on the news.
I don't think Salt Lake's answering their calls. So they're calling me. I think is what's really happening.
It is always kind of.
Real cold, Ted. And they ask questions you can't answer. What's the cause? What's your guess? Not going to guess.
Larson.
No.
You don't say that as the fire.
I know, I know.
Well, so there's, you have to be careful because if you establish any type of bias before you go in. It actually can impact how you look at evidence. Try really hard not to develop any bias.
We went through the, uh, yeah, the old maps and.
I looked at some Ted sent out, but.
These are the same. Those are the same. Yeah. This one is just what he's copied there. It looks like he did exactly what we asked and.
Yeah.
That one looks fine too.
This is the new one. This is the old one. This is the one we marked up. This is the one they did, so.
Well, I think I'll come back for the seven o'clock meeting.
Well, we, if we have one more person, we can take some action. If another person doesn't show up, we have to cancel the meeting at seven o'clock. So. Here at seven.
Oh, you're saying you, if someone doesn't show up?
If someone's not here at seven o'clock.
Then you have to cancel the meeting.
We're done.
Gotcha. We've got to have four. Is that it?
We have to have four. And in that case I have to be, I have to vote. Which.
I'm not sure who's playing tonight. I think it's supposed to be a pretty good game. I think the Utes are playing, but I'm talking about the NFL.
Oh. Thursday night.
You must be a BYU fan.
No.
Oh, okay.
Let's see.
No, I'm a Ute fan.
Who's on Thursday night? Oh, you did?
I played.
Hey. That's unfortunate loss you just had. All of this.
We lost, they lost by five and the long snapper gave them eight points.
Is that right? That how it went down? I just heard, I saw some headlines and it was the snapper that had a bad game. We got Ravens and Bucks tonight, so.
Uh, well, that is the worst spot. Long snapper is the worst spot on a football field.
Really good. Cause no one notices you until they notice you.
Well, no, and you have to stick your head between your legs and you have to focus on getting that ball to whomever. And you know, as soon as you release that ball, you're going to get hit.
No, can't do that anymore.
Can't hit him.
That rule changed. You can no longer red back to center because it was killing too many people. There were crushing too many people. So now. You can hit on either side of them, but you can't hit the center directly until he steps forward.
Really?
Really? That's the new rule. Well, it's been the rule for a while.
Good hell, you can't hit the center. You have to kiss the quarterback. What are they going to do next?
No, no, you have to.
Only on the long snapper.
You have to grab the quarterback.
And you have to lay him gently down.
And gently lay him down on a pillow.
I'm pretty sure you're supposed to kiss him on the cheek first.
Kiss him on the cheek.
Oh.
After you tuck him in.
I, I had to kiss him.
And you tuck him in, you tell him a bedtime story and.
Yeah. No, but yeah.
I understand.
You know what the long snapper was doing?
But it's the day, it's the game.
I used to long snap. You know what he was doing? Cause he's lifting his butt up. Instead of keeping your butt down.
Right.
Okay. Lift your butt up. So that was your trajectory go. Okay, lift your butt up so that was your trajectory go.
Yeah, it goes over the top.
Right.
I've been in that position when somebody snapped the ball over the top of my head. That is a terrible. Cause even if you catch it, you're turned around backwards when you come down.
Well, and I've snapped over heads, okay, I've done it, but then you come out and you say. Keep your butt down, keep your butt down. You just have to tell yourself, keep your butt down.
Well, you're trying to use that leg power to get that ball back then.
You are, but.
But you're right, it changes, that's exactly what a center does.
Changes the whole trajectory of that thing and, and to snap four. Not one, but four over the punter's head.
Yeah.
Got Geneva.
We have a quorum!
You don't wanna sit behind me, come on.
You're all right.
First of all, question, sorry to derail the meeting. Do you have an iPhone now?
Come and sit down, I do.
Oh my gosh, you come into the real world.
Yeah, yeah, I can't run the damn. Oh, I have iPhone, and Geneva has sent me a text, folks.
I sent you a text and it went through blue and I was like, wow, welcome to twenty twenty two.
Quick call that will run a little bit after six, then I'll be at the work session, so Geneva is here. Yay. Okay, let's look at this first.
So, parks, there's the parks.
You guys, are, are you good with what he did with the maps? Here's the stuff.
Those are our notes, yeah, perfect.
And this is the same stuff I sent you. And then that one is uh, so I took your map. And I just cleaned it up to send to the engineer.
Yep, perfect.
They've done that. He's asking some questions about colors.
I don't care about colors.
Green and that.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. The only colors that clashed was the green that he had. And then um, there was another, these, these greens, well, before they were a little different, like these two were just, they were far off. Oh yeah, sorry.
Okay, thanks. So, we'll, we'll get these, uh, we'll get these.
Or is this city? I mean, oh, good, okay, what's your name?
Sure, normally no, but we don't care to know.
Okay, so the only reason I ask is I'm trying to buy this property. And I'm also looking at it from just a functionality standpoint. Um, I think it's right, where's the Nelson Southern stuff? Right here, right?
I don't hear about the storage units at Raph eight hundred.
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to find that and then I have to land behind it seven acres. So, my thought is, is figuring out how to have a buffer from here, cause they do have a stub that comes in. And so whether that's commercial or you eventually have multifamily or you have senior living or whatever. Rather than bringing the homes all the way over into here where it'll be kind of not have any buffer. I think it would be nice if this came over, maybe you bring your mixed commercial residential over. Or it's something else that gives a buffer to the single family homes. That's the only recommendation.
From what your property is to the single family?
Reamers, I think, but yeah, so, but where the stuff hits, I would think that would be a good spot to transition to something else. Rather than extending the single family homes all the way into this area that will be commercial or.
Gotcha.
Storage units or whatever.
What's the pink color, commercial?
It's commercial residential, so he's done a pretty good job, uh, residential mixed use here. Which I think, I think is good zoning. I, I don't think Far West is, is there yet, but. I, I mean, who knows, maybe.
That might be the only colors that I would change is this pink and red. I like the red, but the pink, I don't like the pink.
Geneva doesn't like.
Geneva does not like.
Especially fluorescents.
Oh yeah, okay, you can leave the fluorescent, but this needs a change.
From here, that pink looks like red.
Yeah, it looks the same. So just make it, I don't know, orange or something.
Okay, we'll talk to the engineer. So, this is the uh, the C three zone. And uh, remember we talked to the city council, they wanted to maybe consider some uh, townhomes in the, in the C three zone. I told them I had copied uh, directly from the uh, the mixed use zone, the language. And uh, I, I don't think that they intended that there'd be additional residential. In the C through, C three zone, like the mixed use zone, so.
The townhome portion.
Right, so under L one, where it says townhouses shall not exceed fifty percent of the total dwelling units. I think, uh, well, that comes directly from, but I don't think that was the intent. But I didn't want me to make that decision.
What do you mean, you don't think what was the intent?
Uh, the additional dwelling units. I think the intent was that we just allow townhomes in the C three zone.
Are we just townhomes, no apartments, just townhomes?
Just townhomes. I think we, we, for now, at least my recommendation would be that we stick with the concept that we haven't seen a need for apartments.
Yeah, true.
And that then puts the, the burden on any developer that wants to build apartments to prove.
Right.
That we need apartments and that for, not, not that they can be filled.
Right.
But that Far West actually has that need.
Yeah, I agree with that, I want to leave it.
So you're saying on the C three, just scrap number one?
Right, so what I'm suggesting is that we just cross off number one.
And just let townhouses in the C three.
And then the other uh, thing that we need to address, and if, if they take it on here, I think they'll have to address it. In the, in the mixed use zone as well, and that's for attached units.
In the what zone? What are you talking about?
So I think we'll have to do it here. I also think we'll have to go back and fix the mixed use.
Oh, okay.
But that's another issue.
So you're talking duplexes and stuff in, with attached units or?
No, they're talking, so, so when you build townhomes, obviously, you, you get some benefit if you have more in a, in a room. And so, uh, four is.
It's a good number.
Is, is that too conservative? Should we allow six?
The average are usually four, yeah.
Four is a good number.
I've seen them as high as eight.
Well, yeah, but an average up here is usually four.
So four is good.
Four to six is what we.
I, and I'm good with that, I just.
I think four allows you, cause especially when you go down to separation between groups to be fifteen feet. Four is still feels like a community, but you've got fifteen feet between each of them and you can, they still are all congruent. Yeah.
We need to.
Cause then you get eight, eight units and really your fifteen feet means nothing, you know what I mean?
You look at some of these townhome communities and they're just packed in there. They don't, they don't even have room to park. Like Kova over there, they're all parked along the street.
So the other uh, one is, is the height and.
That's when I feel like we need to have an actual height too.
Well, and I.
Usually it's about twenty eight feet. That's what most cities are.
I'm fine with that.
I just feel, cause that's the number one thing, especially even like when we have our accessory dwellings and stuff like that here. We always have a number. I think, I feel like you need to give them a number. Here's where you meet, not just two story. Cause two story for ten foot ceilings is different than a two story for an eight foot.
Is that to the ridge or to the midpoint of the roof?
It depends on how they.
To the top of the wall.
It's gotta be.
The midpoint to the roof, yeah. If they have a slow roof, if they have a flat roof, then.
Yeah.
That's the plate, one of the things you have to think about.
Cause then if your accessory dwellings are thirty five, no, twenty, thirty five.
Thirty five.
Thirty five, two.
So let me, I will, I will check that.
So if you go, if you go twenty eight feet to the midpoint, what about a flat roof?
If they do a flat roof rather than a pitched roof.
Does it just go to the top of the highest point of the roof?
You have to go to the parapet.
That's fine.
Yeah.
So twenty eight feet to the parapet.
Yeah.
So what way would?
I feel like twenty, do you feel like twenty eight is a wrong number?
Well, no.
Okay.
I do think you should match it.
I think we're right in the right track.
If our single family is thirty, then we need to make it the same as the single family.
Yeah.
Or whatever that is.
Needs to be, okay, well, these can only be this high, not, you know, your average two story. Well, now if you're out of the, if you're out of ground and you're doing something, you know, raised, I just.
We should allow those like Sugar House.
What are Sugar Houses?
The five stories, once they're burnt down. And then we can get a, a hook and ladder truck. Oh, six stories, yeah, cause I forgot the parking structure. Then we can get a fire truck, a hook and ladder truck here.
We have a water truck out of sixty one, don't they?
I don't know. I haven't seen one over there.
I know they've got one, we got one in the Upper Valley and I, when I left, it was out at sixty. But the, the reason being is the benefit of an elevated stream when you're even fighting a house fire.
Sure.
It's amazing the difference that elevates.
Last time I went up and played that little jolly elf in the valley, I couldn't get in the ambulance.
What is, um, what's our height on commercial buildings?
I don't think we have a height.
I just would hate to see commercial buildings, if they come in with a commercial building at thirty five or forty feet. And then we have these twenty eight foot townhomes behind it and it's supposed to look.
Yeah, so the thinking here was, we did have somebody propose the townhomes. Where you have the, the garage on the first level and then you stack.
But you can still do those within twenty eight. We have some in North Ogden right now, the same thing, garage drive in and then top, and they're twenty eight max.
But this would say, this would preclude them from doing that.
We, no, they can still do it.
Well, not if they can't exceed two levels above great plain.
Well, yeah, no, you can, cause the ones all.
Well, no, I, I know that you physically can do it.
Oh, yeah.
We are prohibiting.
Why?
The way this is written.
Why?
That's what was suggested, uh.
But you can still make it, are you recording, are you talking about just the height?
No, it was, it, I think it had more to do with the look.
Oh, okay.
Appearance of them and that kind of thing.
Cause you can still, cause we have ones that you drive into the garage, then in the back is your main level and then you have one upper level. And they're all within twenty eight feet.
That's what we don't want.
Yeah, there you go, but they've, so they've mastered, so basically have expanded the footprint on the back of the garage. And then you build up one level and you're at twenty eight feet. Yeah, I agree with that.
They actually could do what you're suggesting.
Yes, within that twenty eight feet.
Could not do what Greg.
And I agree with that, they should not do that.
And this, and this should preclude them from doing it.
Yeah, agreed.
And then I'll just make this number, whatever it is on single family dwellings.
I think it's thirty.
Yeah.
And I think it.
I'm fine with that.
I think we're somewhere in there. I think.
I would ju- the only thing that, and I guess it doesn't matter, and most commercial buildings aren't going to, but I'd hate to see. Especially cause commercial and residential are gonna go together, I'd hate to see that we have these big commercial buildings and these dinky townhomes. That would be the only reason I would, but at that point, you've figured it out.
Well, I think the thing we don't want to end up with is Ogden Depot, BDO.
Well, not even just that, like, look at, just on two thousand, the red brick one on the west side, the newer one.
Looks nice.
Looks really nice, those are tall though.
Yeah, no.
And imagine, uh, imagine if you had town, imagine if you had townhomes in the back, they maybe might not look that dinky. I'm not talking about like an industrial BDO piece, but something where it's thirty five or, well, if thirty five wouldn't be bad if we're thirty.
I know, I mean, one, they could do that, those BDO ones.
No, I would, I'm.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about, you know? And in M one, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
But.
We should be fine, I can't imagine. I don't know what those brick ones are, but.
And I, and, and this is, I mean, we're talking about a, a fairly limited area. But I think if they could build some residential, I think we would be more apt to have somebody start looking at that property. Is fifty percent too much? Is it not enough? So it currently says that they can take half of that property and fifty percent of the gross acreage and make it into townhomes.
My first thought was it was too much, but I think for you to have a nice project, you need it to balance that way. They can always do less if they're more on the commercial side, but I think a very good balance would be fifty fifty. Even though it does seem high. But I just don't think you can outweigh, if you look at what the commercial would support there, I don't think you can support sixty or seventy five percent commercial.
You can't either, it's just, it's, it is a challenging road. There's, uh, Geneva's heard me say this before, but we used to joke that the whole county was slanted south and, you know, you just kick it in neutral and it drops in late. Cause people come out of North Ogden where we lived and nobody even, nobody went to Ogden. Literally none. They, they would get on the freeway and they'd go late for everything. This was previous to.
You know, there's another thought.
Thing by Lagoon.
Farmington.
As another thought, we could always look at putting fifty fifty, okay, or reviewing a development proposal.
Yeah.
You know, looking at a, you know, working through a, a plan with them so that we, it comes out balanced.
Cause if they made an attractive plan, that'd be great, I think.
And, and I'm not opposed to that, it just, i- i- it's, uh, it does present some challenges for the planning commission.
It does.
Uh, and the city council, because at, at, at that point. You have to take a very uh.
Hard line.
Yeah, I mean, you have to say, cause they'll come in, the, they'll tell you, oh, we can't do this, won't pencil. You gotta give us more of one or the other, uh. This is, C threes.
C three.
Do you have any spots on here that?
That red, not the fluorescent pink.
No. Right now, it's. Is that olive, that olive or brown? And then potential here, well, actually, this has always been C three. This has been C three for.
Isn't the red C three too?
And this has been C three, this is mixed use, that's different.
Yeah, that's a mixed use.
So, and then the only, the only thing that's changed is this here. And we're proposing that so that it matches what's gonna go in here.
I just think that, I guess I thought it was gonna be that piece, but I think no matter what, the fifty fifty split. Will give our, us the best opportunity.
I, I, I do too, I, I mean, that was initially, that was kind of just a guess.
I think the red piece wasn't, our thoughts were patio homes and things in there.
See, I thought it was the opposite, I thought our thoughts were townhomes and commercial.
Well.
I thought the reason behind this was because.
And then commercial, I thought.
This is the residential, commercial mix, the pink. This has, has always been, originally, remember all this was residential. And then I, I think the reason we, at least as I've understood it, we went to mixed use, cause I think the mixed use zone will evolve.
And we're looking at this because of their portion here.
On a planet.
I guess.
Talking with the engineer, he was, I ran into, I don't know where I ran into him, but he was, said he was working on a plan for that mixed use in that area.
This one?
Yeah.
Well, and, and that would be interesting to see what they brought. And, and I'm not opposed to adding development plan into the whole mix. There's, there's some value and we've talked, actually talked about this with the city council before. But ultimately, they have to make that decision because that, uh, you at that point are making a subjective call. Yes, we like this balance or no, we don't. And uh.
You're gonna have to hold the developer to it, and that sometimes isn't always easy.
No, it's, it's, uh, and, and you have to be, you have to be firm.
And you need to collect, you need to collect bonds.
And yeah, and require certain development, it either happens simultaneously or first.
Yeah.
And uh, they don't like that.
I take that back. I think he was mixed density is what he had a plan for, but he was trying to change it to mixed use.
And that's, uh, uh, I mean, this is where, remember when we talked about the mixed density residential? That's what we had in mind here, but the city council.
Said no.
Said no, so. Uh, which I think this could be master planned, if, if you could get somebody to master plan that whole thing. And it would have, I, I mean, you're gonna get some traffic out this north end.
Sure.
But the majority of your traffic far and away is gonna come out.
You want it to come out there where that light is, there's gonna be a light there.
You thought will eventually put a light.
Oh yeah, they're, they're definitely, well, it's already planned. It's already planned, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the transportation drawings.
Yeah, I've been looking at this backwards. I thought this was the piece behind Maverick. That's why I'm like, wow, these really aren't matching the parcels. But this, okay, so if we turn it this way.
Fully understand Geneva.
Okay, so I was right.
If, if I have.
You are right, this was always mixed use. We're talking about this because of this piece.
If I have a north, south, east, west in my, the actual, I cannot look at a plan unless it's.
Well, I'm like.
Yeah.
Like, whoa.
I do empathize with Geneva's.
Oh, you're good, I'm like.
So yeah, so that's, that's, they were looking at mixed density at one time with that, and he had a pretty good plan on it.
And these, these pieces, I think also are going to evolve because there's just some of these that.
Don't end up commercial.
Are gonna lend themselves to, to commercial use. And you're gonna have forever, at least in our lifetimes, some residential along.
Especially the, well, the ones, I think the ones on the east side of nineteen hundred are more likely to be your commercial properties. I think you still see some residential on the west side, because some of those houses. Because some of those houses are, you know.
But you know, you take, and it all becomes, you take Ed Ramer's property. Ed was dyed in the wool, I'll never sell.
Right.
But values are reaching a point where Ed's wondering if.
Give it a couple of months, he'll stay.
Then they would have to.
Just kidding.
No, they would have to wow Ed.
Yeah.
Uh, with dollars and he's a funny guy that is simply, you know. And I don't know why, because it's like he's keeping score. He'll go buy ten acres somewhere else and live just like he lives now. And he has a very simple life.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that.
No.
You know, the thing is, I, I think things is, we'll find out what's going to happen in the next two weeks.
After the election.
Yeah.
Yeah. And after November second.
I mean, right now, everything's in a turmoil, because still the city's going to take power.
Yeah. Or what's going to happen when the feds discuss the interest rates on the second.
Right.
And things like that, yeah. But I can tell you from this standpoint, residential is, eh, it's still going. Um, the interest rates are scaring people, but from a commercial and a development like manufacturing, industrial standpoint. We're still going crazy.
Yeah, really?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep, especially ones that have a lot of capital or a lot of cash or things like that. There, you know, your storage units, your BDO buildings, your gas stations, convenience stores, businesses that are in trades that are still going.
Amazon, FedEx.
Right, but even your smaller, your, your plumbers, your home builders, your things like that, and maybe not home builders, but things like that, there's still, there's a lot of money out there, still.
So we're doing the, the Rush Pot Center, we're doing that home complex. And then we have one on, uh, twelfth street that we're doing too. We're putting the tee box, the golf center like, uh, like Topo.
Oh, yeah.
So, commercial is doing.
What's on twelfth street?
It's not there yet, but we should be ready around next month.
What's, where's it at?
I'll show you.
You're with, um. I can't even think of his name, Link Construction. Pat, yes, okay.
Yeah.
What is your name?
Dave.
Cause Pat came into my office the other day.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, showed me that site plan. It looks awesome.
Yeah, it looks great. It looks really good. Um, so it, it's going, the commercial's still going.
And it really, it is, it really is. There's still a lot of money out there.
Are you doing the ShopCo building?
No, we're west of the, of nineteen hundred.
Okay.
So right over by the river.
Okay, I know where you're at, okay.
So you can see.
Kay, anything else on the order that you were asked for?
Right.
So.
Okay.
There's nothing on the front page. This is all.
It's all the same.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I, I live in a world where this is how.
This probably needs to come out, unless it's a subcategory of townhouses.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good catch. Uh. Actually, what it probably should say is residential townhouses.
Yeah, there you go.
And then on K on the back, do you need to do anything with that being residential as well?
Okay.
Oh, changing the.
Hmm, no, I think we're okay.
Okay, okay.
Well, K will be, just become L, won't it? I'm sorry, L will just become K and you'll just do residential townhomes as the new heading? Are we leaving this?
Actually, let's do that. Let's do the same thing. And get rid of this, make this number one and just put those underneath.
Yep, I like it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will put that together and send that out. And then, uh.
I'm still not getting emails.
You're not?
Well, there was some, something that came through. I need to look at mine too. Some of them said they changed passwords. And that we need to go and, and I didn't go and change.
Is that real though? Was that not spam?
I don't know. We need that.
Cause it was weird. I didn't.
Was it weird? I didn't look at it closely. I didn't do it.
I just left it. I didn't change anything.
So I, because I've got a new phone, I've got to figure out how to put, I'd go to iPhone school out because it is just. And then there's enough differences. It is, yeah.
Yeah, it was a weird email.
Hugely frustrating.
The nice thing is, is Lindsay puts everything in Dropbox, so I'm able to go in there and find everything.
I've never been able to open my Dropbox. I get blocked.
Really? On my phone, yes, but on my iPad or on my desktop, I don't have any trouble.
And I can open it on my phone, but on my old phone, but I can't open it on my computer and I, they can't figure out why.
Oh, and see, mine's just the opposite. I can, I can't open it on my phone, but on my iPad or my laptop, I have no problems.
Interesting.
So, but I have an Android phone. So, and I have an Apple iPad.
We live off Dropbox.
So. So I just, you know, just have a formatting.
So map wise, are we done then?
I think we're good, map wise.
And that's what we need to present to the city council and.
So we can.
We're done with our portion of the general plan? Or what was left of the general plan was adopting the map?
Yeah, so we will put this on our next agenda.
For approval of the maps.
And then we'll just submit these to the city council for their consideration. And then we'll do the same thing with this thing. This will be on our next. But we'll need to set a public hearing to see if anybody's opposed to this. Uh, which. People don't understand that you can actually build townhomes in Far West now. If you do a mixed use development. It's just that no one has.
Looked at it.
Well, you, th- there's a cost benefit to everything. And I would be very nervous with. We're an odd, we're seven thousand people in the northwest corner of the county.
Surrounded by West Haven, which has all of the townhomes.
You have, you have so much in West Haven and so, a- and, and we're. We travel to things. The average person in Far West travels over fifteen miles to work. And so we're, we, we go to the grocery store. We. You know, we don't stay here to do things like that, to the movies, to whatever. And so when you change people's patterns. It's, it, it, Geneva knows lots more about this than I do, but. You know, trying to, trying to change patterns, if you put something within an existing pattern of people, then they're going to try it. But when you change their patterns, it's very different, so.
Well, that goes back to the commercial aspect of needing commercial. Well, you need to be in an area that isn't a bedroom community. Or that has multiple rooftops and things like that to promote the commercial aspect of it. Speaking of that, has anyone been following, um. The piece a while ago that was supposed to get annexed into Plain City, but. And then wanted to maybe come to Far West, but now is in the county?
GRC Ranch.
Yes, they're about to get approvals for that through the county.
They already got it through the planning commission.
Well, yeah, they're, they just need the commissions though.
They've rezoned several times.
They're there.
They, they've came, they came to us. Oh, what, two years ago and.
But they're there. They have approvals through and they just need to have the vote of the three commissioners and that's it.
So Plain City wants it.
Plain City won't take them though now.
Well, Plain City, Plain City only wanted them to build five hundred units. They wanted to build, I think initially at about eight hundred units. I think we talked about, but the problem Far West had is, I think. Was, was opening that door. Because if you open it on one piece of property, it's, it's really hard to say no to others. And so, uh.
But just from a, I mean, it's right in the middle of, you know, that's, it's going to be interesting if it becomes a county piece.
It's right on that S curve.
Right, with amenities and things that surrounding cities use.
So the county wants either Far West or Plain City to take it.
Correct, they do. But they want it on the other side from, I mean, that's a huge, from building permits, impact fees, things like that. That's a, it's a huge deal.
Initially.
Yeah.
But you want. You've got to have commercial to offset residential.
Yeah.
Long term.
From a tax, yeah.
You know, from a tax standpoint, uh, you've got to have that commercial base because residential.
Imagine that being an island like that and everything going to the county, but then them using our roads or infrastructure, everything surrounding, that's a tough case. One ci- one city should. Want it.
It, uh, and I know they've talked to us because the. And the city council has talked about it.
Yeah.
Uh, they brought it back up and talked about it, but they didn't. And they've brought it back up since the change in mayors. It, it was brought up in a meeting. And, and discussed, but it didn't go anywhere. And so, and I'm not sure we want it. But do we want, if, i- if it's, i- it just becomes a real catch twenty-two because if it's going to go in either way.
Which it is.
And once the, once the council votes on it, so the county commission, I should say, approves it. By law, if you annex it, you have to accept their approval. You cannot change their approval.
But they've pushed, I mean, they'll get approvals on that and then.
But that's why they're, that's why they went to the county so they can get hired.
Correct. But that's, like you said, a catch because no matter which way you put it. Even if they stay in the county, we're going to have none of the income from it, but still have the expense of all the use of the surrounding infrastructure.
And, and. So it, let's say, let's say Far West City, we're, we're, said we want it, okay? And the county commission, and at that point, the county commission had not approved it. And I know there was some discussion and they didn't, I wasn't involved in all of that. They just asked me to look at it initially. But then the, the Randall property, this property, this property potentially could all be the same thing.
The zone got approved differently, not through the city.
Yeah, but it, you, it, it becomes very, why would you zone this piece, whatever that is?
But we didn't zone it. There's got to be, there's got to be a grandfather piece of that because we didn't zone it. We, we allowed it in our, we annexed it in, but we did not approve that zoning.
But I think that was the actual concern is. If you allow it here, how do you tell the next guy no? And what's the rationale?
That would be a better fight because we annexed it into as existing. Not, we didn't give them that zoning. We didn't give them those approvals.
But you accepted them.
We accepted the whole parcel. Yeah.
I don't, and I don't know. I, I know that was discussed.
That's going to be a shame though to see it go to the county when really it's a parcel in this. I mean, that'll be.
Well, and I don't think the county can, uh, I, I don't know that the county has. The ability to handle it.
No.
A project that big.
They have plans. If you read through all the reports, they have plans for more staffing, more things to handle, all of your, the building permits, the impact fees, all of the stuff.
Dangerous game because that, that's.
Well, and if you look through all their site plans and stuff like that, they've, they've dumbed, not dumped down, but. They don't have, the county does not have the ability to go out and mow the fields and the open space and the things. So. Basically their, what would be parks and open amenities and amphitheaters and all that kind of stuff are. Hayfields to be able to be taken care of because the county doesn't have the resources to have someone take care of that.
Cause that's what initially was being proposed was. Was significant parks and amphitheater, there's some other amenities. I, I don't remember all that they did.
And that's very true, but some of them have been, I think the amphitheaters still play, but.
Some of it's been stripped out, some of the parks.
Yeah, just because they cannot support the.
So, so then what do you, I, I mean, hayfields are nice, but they're not.
That's what I'm saying. It, it's a shame to see. What might be there and then us just kind of watch it.
Well, it, it, it becomes. I mean, the equipment to mow lawn is very different than the equipment to take care of. I, I mean, your risk of getting somebody hurt in my mind goes up significantly.
Oh, yeah. But it's also going to be strange when we're actually taking the impact of a lot of that, but not receiving anything from it.
And that puts it all on twenty-seven hundred.
Yep.
But. In our current parks and our current schools and our current all background stuff.
It'll be, they want to stub across into my neighborhood, but. I doubt they're, they want to put a stub up against the, the, uh, the wards have a horse ranch over there. It used to be Brad Hart's horse ranch. Back in the day and they want to stub right behind the ranch. Eventually thinking that they'll sell and they'll be able to roll through.
Well, and I think that was another thing when Far West looked at it, they did insist that they had enough circulation.
So they.
Wow.
So they, right now, the plan is two exits onto twenty-seven hundred and one onto North Plain City Road, so.
We're, I just didn't think they were that far along. No one's probably sitting up here. Am I right here or?
You're right here.
Thank you.
Wherever you'd like to land.
Yeah, I'm guessing because. Yeah.
I want to talk to the guy that didn't cut these back.
I do too. I always end up right in between them.
We probably need a mic for that, oh, in case you need.
Oh, that's a good idea.
I'm gonna say I stole an extra. Gosh, we gotta turn the heat on in here, guys.
You up to praying? Hi, Ed Ramer.
This is your blatant attempt to keep me under control when I want to get up and comment.
Oh. You, I want you to get up and comment. You don't have to write things down. Let's see, ladies and gentlemen. All right. Yes, I need to.
Where is everyone tonight?
Yeah, they're watching the ballgame.
The youths don't play today. We better be done.
I know.
I don't care about NFL.
This could go.
See if I can get everyone to stay, stay on par with me. That would be a funny joke. That's where we get bombed down. Yeah. I don't use them anyways, so you're fine. It's got a red light on it.
You know, I told Mackenzie it was cold in here and she told me she wasn't cold.
You, you knew it was cold in here?
She said she was warm. Then I felt like a wimp, so I didn't say anything else.
I was even cold, but I have two pairs of sweatpants on. I'm on butt dinners.
Greg's, Greg's coated up. He's, he's ready.
He's all day to go.
Two wears pairs of sweatpants, it's still forty-five degrees outside. We need to on the, well, maybe I can mention in the next agenda, we need to put something in, or maybe I can put it in our comments, but I'm canceling our Thanksgiving meeting.
Thank you. Let's do that. Okay. Called to order the meeting, the Far West City Planning Commission. It is, uh, seven PM. It's, uh, the twenty-seventh of October. Year's 2022. Uh, we'll begin our meeting with an opening ceremony. Geneva will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then Darren will give us a prayer. If you'll all rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here at Planning Commission meeting this evening. We pray that thy spirit will guide us and direct us in, in discussing the matters of business of the community of Far West. We are grateful to live in this community and we pray for it in our state and our nation at this time. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Amen. Uh, the agenda references a report from the city council. As the city council did not have a meeting, uh, there's no report to give, so we'll skip that item. The next item, or item on our agenda is to open a public hearing to consider the request of conditional use permit for an accessory building over 2,000 square feet for Jordan Watson at 1634 West, 1850 North. Is there a motion?
Motion, we open the public hearing?
Motion by Geneva to open a public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Greg. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone in the public that'd care to comment on this? It's pretty simple, just an accessory building. Okay, seeing none. And does anybody want to hear from Jordan?
I do have one question.
Jordan, come on up to the microphone.
I mean, your dad was much better last time, okay?
Yeah, my dad came in my place. Uh, so appreciate you entertaining him. And I do have some, some renderings if you guys want those.
No, it's, it's.
Updated survey?
Sorry?
Uh, we'll get into that in a minute. So just, we're just, all we're talking now is, is, is anything on a public hearing relevant to him building the building with the assumption that he has the land and the setbacks to do so? So is, is there a question? Okay, you can sit down. All right, you'll, you, you'll probably be back in a second. Uh, okay, is there a, another motion? Motion by Geneva to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Second by Darren. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to the city council. We cannot make a recommendation to the city council because the engineer has determined that this has to go through the subdivision process. And so, uh, we had originally thought this could be done with a simple lot line adjustment. It cannot, and so, uh, there's nothing more we can do with this parcel until it goes through a survey and a proper subdivision process. So questions?
That answered my question.
Because of his subdivision, the one he's in?
Yeah, this, 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 if you can explain, okay. Jordan, tell us what you know.
Yeah, so appreciate Lindsay trying and, and you Ted, trying to help me fast track this. Unfortunately, engineers don't like to put their name or their stamp on things that don't meet all of this new state requirements. So because I'm in a subdivision and this goes for all subdivisions from what I understand, you have to go through a little bit of a different process to do a lot line adjustment. My engineers went ahead and done that. Um, it is, what, what need, what the city needs has been turned in. And, um, I've got the Mylar stamped by the engineer. I'm going through the process of hopefully getting signatures from the city. And then that will be taken care of. And then we can follow through with hopefully getting the, um, conditional use permit finalized on the building. I've got the site plan for the building in those new, um, lot lines, meeting all of the city's requirements and setbacks. Um, the height of the building meets the city's requirements. The design of it's complementary to my house. So just trying to do all these things so that I can, um, stay on track for what my contractor has as a mid-December build date. So.
Can we see what you brought?
Yeah.
And I guess that makes sense because Shane Nishakawa did the same thing. He had to go through the subdivision process because he was in that little subdivision.
I assume that the adjacent property is yours as well, that it straddles.
Um, so.
He knows the other owner.
Yeah. So the property that, um, I added to mine was formerly my dad's.
Okay.
Um, we, we added about a fifth of an acre. It, it actually was, it was really simple. It was 32 feet on both sides. Um, so the line on this, on the north stayed the same. Uh, it just went 32 feet further into my dad's. That's what, that's what the, um, contractor measured off to be able to hit the setbacks that I needed. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, the, the people that it impacts the most is my own family who are supportive of, of it. And then hopefully nobody else seemed to mind too much because they didn't come tonight.
And so we, we don't have to repeat the pu- public hearing. That's, that's fine. So we will move this through as quick as we can.
Yeah. And yeah, Lindsay's been great. I'm happy to do whatever needs to be done, do it the driveway. We've got a little bit of time, so hopefully everything turns out okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a recommendation to the city council on a sign for Jiffy Lube at 18, or excuse me, 1783 West, 2700 North. What's the feeling? Is there someone from Jiffy Lube here? Come on up and, and tell us about your sign.
I'm Brent Albers and I'm, uh, I'm actually with the sign company that we, we do all the Jiffy Lube signs in the western United States, so I'm here to represent that.
You can't answer my question.
But I, I know the owners here very well and been doing their signs for 25 years, so I know a lot about the company. Um, this particular area, this, the building is set back quite a bit from the building or from the street front. And we don't have a lighted sign on the front. We do have two on the sides that you can't really see. So the, the store and the site's just kind of disappearing. And everybody has huge pole signs all around. And so we are looking just for some curbside appeal, some curbside marketing there that it, it'll be one of the smallest signs along that street, but it will give us some some visibility there, so.
Well, my only question was, why on earth didn't they do this when they built Jiffy Lube? Cause it, it makes perfect sense that that sign.
I think when, I think when we did it, there was not much around it, so it kind of stood out. And now it's, everything's built up around it and it got lost, so.
Super. Could you tell us your name again and who you represent just for the minutes?
Brent Albers with Identity Signs.
Super. Is there any questions for Brent? Brent, thank you very much. What's the desire of the planning commission?
I recommend that we, uh, recommend approval to the city council on the new sign for the Jiffy Lube located at 1783 West, 2700 North.
Motion by Greg to recommend approval to the city council. Is there a second? Second by Darren. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. We'll, we'll forward that on to the city council. The next item on the agenda is to set a public hearing to consider a request for a rezone for ALS development from an R115 and A1 zone to an R115 and M1 zone with the appropriate parcel numbers located at 1913 North, 2000 West. Uh, so this.
Can we have them at least talk?
Sure. Come on up and tell us what you want to do there.
I need to state my name and all that.
Yes, state your name and who you represent.
Yeah, Dave LaLolli, uh, represent ALS Development. Um, I live at 2273 North, 2825 West in Plain City, so not far. My house, uh, my road borders far west, so. Uh, I, we are purchasing the storage units that are currently there, existing tri-city storage. And, uh, Gary and Diane Brown, who own the land to the north border, they are in a position where they're ready to, to move away and sell their property. And so um, looking at the potential to expand those storage units. Um, not increasing them any further than maybe 50 feet to the east, but increasing them further to the north, um, up along the, the border of the canal and to the north border of their property that touches Ed Reamer's property. So, uh, the rest of the property, it, I believe it's kind of mixed between R115 and A1. Uh, for now, I just figured to extend the rest of that to R115. I, you know, after meeting with you guys earlier and seeing your plans for commercial slash residential there, I think it fits. Um, as far as the commercial goes, I don't see that being commercial anytime soon. I think it's a a long time coming before that, that frontage becomes viable commercial. Uh, I think it's going to start from the corner at 1800 and work its way that way, or you know, from 2700 South, so. But anyways, the, the main, uh, request is for, to change the storage unit zoning, to get M1 to expand that. I think the current storage units, they're, they're in an old C2 zone, probably just non-conforming.
What are they in currently?
No, they're currently in a C2 zone. Remember, uh, the, the city changed the ordinance because the, the desire initially was to not have storage. One of the issues was no storage unit south of 2700 North. And so, uh, this does not meet the current general plan, as you know. And so, uh, in order for him to go to the city council and ask them to consider, uh, changing that, we have to tell him no. Uh, and it, we, we would have to, to make any other decision, we would actually have to take a vote that was contrary to, uh, the general plan. It would be, uh, probably not appropriate to table this because when something's tabled, you really don't have the right of appeal and it makes it somewhat cloudy as to whether then he can go to the city council or not. So the appropriate thing would be for someone to make a motion indicating that this does not meet the general plan and, and the planning commission is not willing to consider it. And then we could vote on that. And then, uh, if that happened, that would then give him the right to go to the city council, as I understand the rules.
Are there any other questions before that? Does anyone have questions on this piece?
Have you seen the site plan that I provided? It is, you got, okay. You do have it, yep. Yeah.
I mean, it's a tough one because your storage units are already there and you want to put yourself in compliance. I get it.
Everything in yellow is, is proposed to be new, correct?
Which would be the current C2, correct?
Would be the.
No, this is an expansion of the current storage.
But so this, but this portion is C2 currently.
Right.
Just this portion.
Correct, yep. Yep. And the other thing too is, uh, and I've met with the staff before, so if there is a better option you would suggest, uh, we, we are open to it as well. Uh, we feel like it's kind of a natural fit. It also creates more of a buffer if it, if indeed that corner goes commercial, residential, or, or whatever, as it works to the north as well. Um, it seems like storage units would be the easier fit and it's kind of an undesirable portion of land for commercial if the area is rezoned as commercial. I don't know back in that corner that you'll get, you'll not, you're not going to get any retail. You won't get, I don't think you'll get a nice office because it is already by existing storage units that aren't necessarily very pleasing at this point. Um, and our plan would be to come in and doll those up, have a nice, uh, CMU finished face wall uh, that would look really nice on the outside. So you're not just looking into storage units. Um, and that'd be things we were open to, to doing as far as a development agreement to, to put in more storage units if that were approved by the city council.
So what is the desire of the planning commission?
I'll take a stab at this.
If I pull up my agenda, you can go.
Okay. Uh, I recommend that we not table this, but deny this because it doesn't follow the general plan. And the PC, uh, planning commission should not take any action on it because it doesn't follow the current general plan. Okay, so a motion from Greg to deny the request for a public hearing at the aforementioned property because it does not match the current general plan. Is there a second? Second by Geneva. Further discussion to that motion.
I would encourage, just a side note, maybe there needs to be some sort of joint work session, including you with the city council and maybe talk about plans for this corner. So. But this at least lets you go to city council, get some of the opinions, but you can push that as well.
Sure, yep.
So we can kind of master.
Yeah, and that was my intention of kind of, you see, I did outline the whole thing, but then I came back and I dissected the area. Did it show that? Okay. Uh, just for the sake of talking about that piece, but we would, I have talked to most of the property owners on that whole corner, including Wasatch Valley, who's the larger piece of that corner. And they're, they're open to working some sort of a master plan out.
Super. Okay, further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. You can appeal that decision uh, or take the decision to the city council, uh, for their consideration.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Consent items, approval of the minutes dated September 22nd, 2022. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes. Um, I lost my agenda here.
Motion by Darren to approve the minutes dated September 22nd, 2022. Is there a second?
I think I had one comment on them and I don't think I ever emailed. Oh, there we go. I'm like trying to pull them up.
We probably ought to have a second before we discuss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Further discussion to that motion. Super. Any further discussion then to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Report on assignments, Greg.
None at this time.
Geneva?
Um, nothing on assignments, but I did bring up to Ted, we probably need to look at on the next agenda cancelling our Thanksgiving meeting.
Do you want to do, uh, December and November at the same time?
It's going to be December 24th.
Yeah. October 22nd.
That's not what this says. Oh, let's go back. You're right. It's wrong here. Okay, Darren, would you restate your emotion to?
Yes. I move to approve the minutes from October 13th, 2022.
Thank you. Motion by Darren to approve the minutes dated October 13th, 2022. Greg, are you still good with a second?
Second.
Second by Greg. Further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Mackenzie, for correcting that. Uh, Geneva, you did recommend then that we consider November and December holidays.
It's going to be November 24th and December 22nd.
Okay, we will, uh, put that on the next agenda.
22nd isn't the worst. It's still far away, but definitely the Thanksgiving one.
Okay, and we can discuss that in the meeting. Darren, did you have any reports?
I don't.
And I have nothing for this meeting. Is there anyone in the public that would care to comment this evening? Put, yeah, come to the mic and tell us who you are and where you live.
If you filled out one of these.
No, you have to tell us who you are and where you live.
My name is Edward Reamer and I live at 1931 North, 2000 West, Far West, Utah. Weber County, state of Utah, United States of America. Fun stuff, guys. So as I mentioned, I, I saw the notice that the public hearing was going to be considered for the property next to my property. And so that leads to me, uh, leads me to question. How do I find what the current policy is concerning M1 zoning next to my residential and agricultural land so that I know what is allowed or not allowed and, and how it will follow in upcoming meetings?
That's, that's a great question. And if you go to the, uh, city webpage, click on general plan, the new general plan is there. And you can go through and read that. The current thinking is that we don't want any M1 south of, any more M1 than we already have, south of 2700 North.
Cool. Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing your lovely bride as well. We appreciate Deborah being here.
Also, I want to congratulate you on third place at the trunk or treat.
I tell you, that is an accomplishment to get third place and not be there.
I swore it was you. Sorry, my mistake. My mistake. Sorry.
I brought the grandkids. Is there any other, but we. Is there any other, but we've, we've let the meeting fall apart. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a final motion.
I recommend we adjourn.
Motion by Greg to adjourn. Is there a second? Second by Geneva, further discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We appreciate Mackenzie being with us, taking notice, we, uh, for us and, and being our support. We appreciate Janelle being with us, who's our city council representative, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.